Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town Council Workshop of June 12th, 2023. I will start with roll call. Counselor Meany.
President.
Counselor McGuire.
President.
Counselor Chapel.
President.
And I am Counselor Carter, and to the right I have Town Manager Nate Rudy. We have two items on our agenda this evening, and the first is revisiting the self-storage ordinance. And I believe we have a memo in our packet, starting on packet page two, which identified the three remaining items. We've had, for those who are unaware, we've had many workshops on this. We've had first read, we tabled it, we'd have a second read and tabled that again. So, I mean, a first, a second first read, and tabled that again. And so, we had three remaining items. We received a tremendous amount of feedback. We incorporated most of the items that we received. I've got a count of seven into the ordinance. We had one that was sticking point, the minimum setback from the road. And then we also had a couple of items related to some language, whether or not it met the standard for legal, and then a second one where I believe that came out of the planning board review. They wanted to verify they understood the language in one other section. So I think the easiest thing to do is to have Doug introduce himself, and we will kind of go through each of the three items individually and weigh in.
Thank you. Doug Webster, Planning Director, and I appreciate the summary. That's great. I hope that the intro memo was clear. And we did get some input. Let's see, I can step through the memo here. Legal has weighed in with the setback, saying that it's a quite standard practice to have different setbacks applicable for different uses. Regarding the minimum, the 80,000 minimum lot size.
Okay, why don't we just take number one?
Sorry.
So did anybody have any questions on the response from legal on number one? I think the issue was, the question that came up was because we listed the ZBA and the planning board, they were concerned that both were listed. In other words, if they wanted to appeal a ruling of the planning board, it would go to the ZBA. But it looks like from the attorney's response, we're just basically setting another restriction by saying this can't be waived, and therefore, the planning board and the ZBA are both listed, and that's okay.
Yes.
Any?
Makes sense to me.
Well, I think the planning boards asked us on multiple occasions to be more exact in that way. And this is a big enough issue that I have to believe people would ask for waivers all the time if we weren't clear about what the expectation was. So yeah, I think it makes sense.
Okay. Marty?
I have nothing. I have nothing.
Okay. Yeah, and I'm fine with it being in there as well.
Didn't mean to jump the gun, sorry.
That's okay. We'll just take them one at a time.
For, just for what it's worth, I really try not to recommend language such as this unless it's really warranted. But given the, my understanding of the council's intention to preserve the front portion and the probability of looking for a reduction on that, I felt it was warranted.
Makes sense.
Okay. Number two, packet page two. That is, so that 80,000, when the language was originally drafted, was contemplating both the front portion and the rear portion of the lot as one entity. That was the original concept, is that there would be one site plan that would take, utilize the frontage, and then behind that would be the self-storage. In further reconsideration of that, if, in the minimum, the current minimum lot size in commercial is 40,000. And so the thing, the other piece of that was that we tried to calculate what the minimum area necessary for a self-storage facility would be with a buffer and stormwater and everything, but we came to the conclusion that if they choose to build a smaller self-storage facility, then why not? So I don't think that that 80,000 minimum achieves anything. It strikes me, if I'm understanding the council's position correctly, the integrity of that first frontage portion is the driving force, not the size of the self-storage facility.
I think you're probably right, Krista.
Yeah, I would agree. I don't think, if people want to build a smaller self-storage facility, that's perfectly my, in my opinion, yeah.
Yep. Dan?
Yeah, I wouldn't see any reason why we would have to set a minimum for that.
Yep, either.
It's good.
Yep, so we'll strike that.
I think that the, it's the, it's the, the goal of the ordinance is to allow people an opportunity to build self-storage businesses while at the same time helping the community broaden the tax base by taking the most valuable piece of property and allowing it to be used for other purposes. For me, the size of the building on the front lot is more of an issue than the back lot piece because if the front lot isn't utilized to its fullest, then, you know, we don't realize the goal so much of diversifying the tax base and spreading the costs across a bunch of different taxpayers. The other side of that coin for me, though, is that we also talk about open space in the village, and as the village becomes more dense, wanting to have still some open space there. So I, I think that the minimum standard for that front lot could be flexible. You know, if someone wanted to build a 60,000-foot building on the front lot, square foot building on the front lot, but they were, wanted to build 20,000 feet of hardscaped public space, you know, that might be a good trade-off.
Would you see that, though, needing, or would the contract zone approach be the better option for that, do you think?
Well, it would, except the contract, the whole idea behind the contract zone being the exception rather than the rule.
Right, well.
So is there a way for us to write that into the ordinance so that we don't have to do a contract zone?
Yeah, I mean, I agree. We shouldn't be doing contract zones all the time. But I also believe that, especially based on the two that we've done, certain projects are very unique, and they have worked well.
And I think.
And I think you made the point, like with the investment housing, that that might have been a little smoother had it been a contract zone.
I think so. I think that, I know it's not the intent of contract zoning, but I go back to my analogy of the shovel, you know, somebody invented a shovel and look at how many different kinds of shovels we have. The contract zone does give us an opportunity to create something different than we otherwise could with our current zones and our current ordinances. And though we haven't really taken advantage of it yet, the contract zones for both Stillwater Pines and for, it's Cumberland Farms, thank you, you know, I think should be the basis for our changes to those ordinances when we can get to that point.
Yeah, I think my point is just to remind everyone out there in the development world that we do our very best to make it flexible, but also to try to encourage what we want and need in town. But there are other avenues out there. If there's a unique project that is going to add value to the town, then there are ways to address those two.
I mean, I wish that I tried to interest the developer of Weeks Hill in doing a contract zone with the council to, you know, to save that project. You know, that would be roughly $90,000 a year in taxes on, you know, on needed housing, but housing that most likely wouldn't enlarge the school system or put a lot of, you know, constraints on other services. You know, that was a real missed opportunity. And so, I kind of want to, I guess I think in the back of my head, whenever we talk about these things, how do we prevent that, something like that from getting away from us in the future?
Yeah, for your point about open space, that project also included quite a bit of
Yes.
well-designed open space. It was going to connect down here to Pennell, so it would have been a wonderful network in the village.
When I'm by myself, I still cry a little bit.
Yeah. Well, and I think it makes Pennell footprint and the Village Gateway property, the open space that we have there, is going to become more important in the villages as we increase density.
Especially 15, you know, 25 years from now.
Yep. So that's a good transition to the third item, I think, which we want to kind of talk a little bit about that.
Sure, happy to provide some background. And the concept was to see if there was any practical, excuse me, viability for some type of a sliding scale, so depending on one or more elements, including, you know, site characteristics, development constraints, was there any practical ability to, in some, for, given a certain set of circumstances, reduce the 300 feet? And we, I met with Counselor McGuire about it, and actually we kept around with OAC a little bit. And the upshot is that if you were to do that, but, you know, and the public water, the public water, at least from my perspective, is not a huge thing because you're not really using water and you don't really have wastewater. Yes, you have stormwater. And then the question, or the philosophy, the reasoning that was expressed, but what if it's a limited site and you only have 200 feet of usable depth? Well, if the town is really, well, to respect it, if the town is serious about trying to preserve that frontage, then if you have limited depth, then that depth should be used for a higher value, more convertible commercial space, if the mission is to increase the valuation of the town. So I think for those reasons, and there was not, I think Counselor Chapel was at the OAC meeting. I don't think there was a consensus at OAC, but I think there were, there were those that said point blank that we should be retaining that 300 if we're serious about that mission. And I guess the final point is that, as we said all the way along, and I feel like I've repeated this, I guess I have, that this is, at least my expectation, vision, hope, is that self-storage will be revisited as part of the new townwide zoning. And we've touched conceptually on allowing, as an example, self-storage in the, in the back 40, as the expression goes, if it's buffered and screened, because it's really a benign use, it really is.
Especially in transition, yep.
Yep. So that's, so that's kind of where we landed, and I'm trying not to be defensive. I hope I'm not coming off that way, and I do the best I can. I understand where those that are opposed to the 300 are coming from. But just as with many policy decisions, there's a, there are some legitimate, I think anyway, counter-arguments, at least for the time being, until we tackle the new zoning and look at this with a little, in more totality.
Krista, your thoughts?
Um, yeah, I thought your memo really covered all the concerns and the counterpoints for those concerns well. And I was one of the ones trying to look for some flexibility around the 300-foot buffer because I recognize that can be difficult for people embarking on this type of development. But I, where I've landed, based on your thorough explanation and just our experience in talking about this, is that I do, I do agree that we need to maintain this setback because ultimately, it's a way for us to keep road frontage viable for the types of properties we really want to see, especially in the village. And I think you're right in identifying that this is the beginning of this ordinance. We haven't finished our zoning work related to the conference of plan, and we can always come back to this to add potential sites in other parts, in other zones around town, so.
Dan?
I'd like to know if someone has a lot that has the depth to meet disordinants such. If we're, if we're allowing them, if we're getting rid of the minimum size for a self-storage unit, then if someone doesn't have as much property behind that 300-foot level, there's still an opportunity for them to create that. So that feels like a plus there. But the other piece is around the buffers. So, right now, the buffer between the two lots is what? Remind me.
It's at 50, and that is something I should have taught. That is something that I think we could probably provide some flexibility.
I think that, you know, if you're going to, you put in a doctor's office, or even you put in a, you put in a apartment building, if we have the design standards such that puts a facade that's, you know, that fits into the architecture of the surroundings, you could have a zero buffer between the front piece of property and the back piece of property. You know, it might look like a long wall instead of a fence, but it could be done well, you know, not unlike Mr. Liberty's done for his, with some plantings and stuff. And give, you know, most of that 50 feet back to the developer for that back lot. In the village or in densely zoned places, unless you want to do something with like trails or other pathways through town, it feels like a lot of space to put just as a screen. So I've sort of been thinking about that. And then the other part of it is if there's someone who wants to develop a self-storage unit but is struggling to come up with a viable project for the front part of that property, what resources are available to that person to help them, you know, either get in touch with someone who would be interested in that project or could help them develop that project? You know, it's in their, it's in everybody's best interest to see that piece of property developed, to the owner as well as the town. And so it feels like, you know, it doesn't have to be an adversarial relationship, that maybe that there's some way that, you know, just thinking out loud here, you know, that we can either introduce them to some resources or to some contacts to make it more of a partnership and less of a us and them kind of a thing. Because it really is in everybody's best interest to see that piece of property developed.
Great.
I don't know what that looks like, but.
Well, I mean, I think that when people are looking for space in the town, I'm sure they call the planning department once in a while, or real estate brokers, or, you know, Savio Lake's chamber in Anquire. So I think the network's there, Dan. It's just a matter of, you know.
Duck tailing.
Yeah, duck tailing it. And quite frankly, with the work we're going to be doing in this, in half of our workshop here at LD2003, it's going to open up density. It's going to change the landscape quite a bit in Maine. You know, we've already had people here waiting who said, I've been waiting to do something and I can't, and now I'm going to be able to. So, not necessarily all commercial, but, and we'll talk about the mix of commercial and residential in our second half here. But, yeah, I agree. I think, you know, I came down to, we either have a range that is lot-specific, which is really complex and hard to do, or we leave it and we readdress after we get this LD2003 work and the comp plan zoning work done. And I kind of landed there, because I agree. I think right now, everybody is thinking about where they can build self-storage right now, and that's not going to be the case soon. And there are limited spaces available, and when you look at those lots, then you start worrying about trying to make them work, but. And then the other thing is saturation. We've had conversations about the fact that we need a variety of businesses, not just one type of business. And so, and I think we do have to take advantage of the limited frontage that we do have to attract new businesses. I mean, you look at, and I know people have talked about us being a food desert. We really are. But there are some unique things coming in. If you look at New Gloucester, you know, Brickyard Hollow just bought new brewery. They put a Maples in there, and there's a line out the door every, almost every day. That parking lot is full, and it's a breakfast and lunch place, a really good one. Two Moms Kitchen, right here in the village. So I think we're on the cusp of getting a lot of attention. And infrastructure matters, and I think people forget that. Having two businesses on one lot requires less infrastructure for us. We don't want things spread out. I know LD200 is going to hamper that a little bit because we can't afford the roads we have now, quite frankly, and so.
We can't afford the what?
The roads we have right now and the infrastructure. So the more concentrated we can put the village, the businesses, and try to attract them into a similar area, then that helps us with that as well. I really do like the idea of changing the buffer for flexibility there. I think that's imperative. It's part of the LD200 question, 2003 question we're going to talk about later, especially in the village. I think we have to have flexibility in space between and buffers because every spot's going to be unique, and our goal is to try to fill that, those spots in. So we got to be flexible. So I like that, and I think eliminating the 80,000 square foot really opens this up too, makes the 300 more workable. So I'm all for that. Are you for looking at the buffer? I want to loop back.
Yeah, I thought that was a good idea. I, I, just, I had a clarifying question for Dan. Are you talking about only eliminating the buffer between buildings or also around the sides and back?
Just between the two lots.
Okay.
So the self-storage unit could be, probably not a zero buffer, but it could be,
Close.
it could be 10 feet. Again, if the facade of that part of the building was attractive enough and there was some planting there, you could park right up against that. So for the building in the front, if you think about it, you park right up against that 50-foot buffer, and then 50 feet further on, you have the self-storage unit. That just doesn't feel like a good use of space.
Yeah, right, then you go.
Separation of uses.
Yeah.
I guess the one question I would have is that our intention is to keep parking behind the buildings, and I just want to make sure the, any buffer that we eliminate between those two lots would still account for having parking in the back, yeah.
I think it would free it up potentially for that parking.
Yeah.
Potentially. You only needed a 10-foot buffer.
Right.
You know, it could make it a lot that maybe isn't viable, viable.
Speaking of parking behind the buildings, our duplexes in the village ordinance had a loophole in it such that that building.
Our village design standards, yeah. But now with the new parking non-restrictions in LD2003.
Well, that didn't affect that. I mean, that building could have been closer to the road and the parking for.
Further back.
Ben, oh, back.
It would have looked nicer.
And I think that's, I'd like to see us revisit that ordinance.
I think it's on the follow-up list.
So that we can just make that adjustment pretty quickly.
Village Design Standards Parking Duplexes.
Yeah, personally, I think it's a big change.
The actual duplex itself is a real huge improvement, in my opinion.
It's better than what it could have been.
Yeah, exactly. It looks real nice. But you're right, then it has the cars parked out front, so it kind of, kind of takes away from how nice the building looks.
Well, it's just an oversight on our.
Yeah, yeah. Can't think of everything.
So many moving parts.
Yeah. So are you okay with keeping the 300-foot setback from the road, but looking at the buffer in between the two businesses?
Yeah, that's fine. And then with the, with say, a two-acre plot, we could, the owner could build a building with commercial downstairs and residential upstairs and have a little, like, like buffer beyond, like we have over here at the, with the Chinese restaurants. China, because.
Oh, yeah, that's actually going to be in our next discussion. You mean, having commercial on the first floor, residential on the second. Yeah, yeah, we'll be talking about that in a minute. But you're okay with the buffer between, say, where a doctor's office, and then right behind it was a self-storage, so.
I think one of the things I'd just like to bookmark for the discussion is the sort of walkability of the space. So where we have buffers between lots like this, do, in the case of the CZA for Stillwater Pines, one of the to-dos that we put on that was maintaining the connectivity to the other trails that are there and allowing public access for the new ones that are built. You know, we might want to do the same thing within the confines of the village proper and the village because, you know, I don't know that we'll necessarily have pedestrian zones per se, but we want to make, we want to make sure people and bikes can move through the town and not just on the roadway. So I don't know how that would work. But, you know, it could be, if someone was willing to, you know.
Bonus.
Yeah, exactly.
That's actually, that's something, you know.
Some sort of a bonus for.
The open space community started looking at the open space subdivision, and we're talking about that, and of course LD2003 is hanging out there. So, but we did look at some material that was from, I think, Pennsylvania. They had some really unique approaches that were far better. There was so much less road and so much more open space, and it was the same number of units. The houses were closer, the lots were smaller. But they had versions where if a developer wanted, you know, the Taj Mahal houses, that they could still do it. But that was part of it, is the bonus. And when we looked at the bonuses that are currently in there, there's some good bonuses in there, but there's also a cap on the bonuses. So if you're willing to do one or two things, it's great, but if you do the third thing, you're over the cap anyway, so why would you do the third thing?
It's a complicated.
Yeah, it's very complicated, and of course, the density's changing. So now that is all tied together because that's what the bonuses are for. But, you know, connectivity, having your trails open to the public, that kind of thing is, can get you more of a bonus. Yeah, I definitely agree with that.
Yeah, the density bonus cap has been, at least up until LD2003, the tried and true from the attorneys has been, don't exceed the gross density for the zoning district that you're in. Because otherwise, you're compromising the integrity of your zoning ordinance. You can mess around with deductions, but don't exceed the gross.
Yeah.
Those are the marching orders that have been given, so.
No, it makes sense, but now it's kind of changed.
But there could be, you know, there could be a bonus for someone who was willing to make a hardscaped public area versus just planting lawn.
Yeah.
If, you know, within the confines of where it was located and what it was a budding to. So if you had a lot whereby, you know, someone created a hardscape surface on the east side of your lot, and the lot further east was undevelopable, and that person wanted to come in, and part of their goal was to get that to, that hardscape piece would be on the west side of their lot so that they would join together so that we'd have some ability to direct that and kind of as a jigsaw puzzle, put those pieces together over time. It seems to me we'd have to have some sort of carrot to get people to cooperate with that longer-range goal.
Well, and the other thing is, is what else drives the developer, and it's going to be costs. So, you know, tying it into some of your road standards potentially with sidewalk on one side instead of on both, or whatever. There are other ways to award them than just straight density, so that's. If you look at the Stillwater, that's basically what it was. It was, they needed a waiver on the road, and in exchange, we asked for these other things, so.
And the density there is not, you know, they're not going to get anywhere close to the 50, the 50 houses cap that we put on.
On the project, yeah, yeah. Okay, so.
I think they're like 30, 29 or 30, I think they're at.
They're at right now.
In phase two, when phase two is done, yeah.
Okay. So keep the 300, look at the buffer between the units, eliminate the, reduce the 80,000 square foot, and leave the other language. So that sounds to me like a first read again.
One more time.
One more time.
All right.
If you can coordinate that. All right.
Well, and that's, I mean, unfortunately, none of the folks who have been following this and have been interested in the changes are here tonight. But it's not a smooth process, or even sometimes a timely one. But each time we've gone to bat, I think the ordinance has gotten better. So it has, it has value that way.
I find it interesting because the old adage was that once it got to first read, it was locked in, and people never liked that, and sometimes it felt that way.
Yes.
But this is a perfect example of how it's actually supposed to work. That's why you have a first read. That's why you send it to planning board. That's why you have a second read. Now hopefully, you're not making too substantive a change, so you don't have to keep going back to first read, but if you do, you do. I mean, that's the process, so.
Actually, one thing I would like us to consider when the new council is seated, that we we have a public hearing at the beginning of the process. At least as an experiment. It may turn out to not improve things, but I think having a public hearing when we first start the discussion and giving people an opportunity to say upfront, these are the things I'd like you to think about, or these are the things I'd I'd like, I hope will come out of that is much better to get at the beginning of the process than even at the first read. Cause hopefully when we have the first read, we've we've had the discussion. And the way our process is set up now is we're not really having the discussion with the community until the first read, so we have to go back and and redo it. Somehow, we need to get the the horse in front of that cart, I think.
I think we did receive quite a bit of feedback during our workshop process, but I I see what you're saying.
Well, I think that was sort of my thought is, um, I I don't know if we need to formalize a public hearing. I maybe we just need to add a pe- a time for public comment at our workshops where we discuss these things.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think if you and and when, so like when Doug is bringing this memo to us for LD two zero zero three, it's still very opaque. So it's really hard to ask for the, because that then you don't wanna have it too too early. Because then if you make decisions afterwards and they haven't had it and you changed something or they weren't aware of it, then they feel like you've so it's 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 gonna be an interesting thing. Cause that came up with the Armist Road. They're like, well, why did you start off without having stormwater on both sides of the road? Well, you have to start with something so that people can actually look at it and say, okay, this is the direction you're headed in. And that usually spurs the the feedback. So it like maybe the second workshop or something, have that public comment when you've got a little meat on the bone, so to speak. And then it's far enough before first read, but it's also gives them some idea of where you guys are headed, so that they can actually dive in and understand what you're about to change. Or add or take out.
Yeah, I I
It's interesting.
I agree with Kristen, though. I think that if there was someone here tonight and they wanted to speak on this particular issue, I understand that the workshop is the council's time to work and it's different from a council meeting per se, but I still think the the more we allow for comment and the sooner we allow for comment, the the less likely I think we are to have conflict further down the road when people are feeling threatened by the fact that we're on the verge of making a decision and they can't change it now.
Changes are. Yeah. Yeah, change is hard. And I, we've had public comment in workshops before, so there's no rule against it, so.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
Absolutely. All right, anything else on self-storage? All right, moving on to the big one. I think this starts on packet page five. But I think there's a lot of information in here, so I think if we jump to packet page eleven. You guys don't have to jump there. But you need to jump to eleven. That is kind of the list of the questions. So we're gonna use that as kind of the agenda piece as far as how we're gonna tackle this giant memo. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And you can, um, so we'll start on packet page eleven underneath your summary of the town council input requested. It starts with the growth or area overlay and we'll just kinda go down each one and you can provide information as needed.
Okay.
Okay?
Sounds great.
All right.
So, yeah, what we tried to do is bring the uh, provide the background, pose the question for each particular policy guidance, uh, matter that we're looking for input on. Um, we tried to pose the question, provide the background, and then bring all the questions together at the end. So the growth area overlay, the question is.
Oh wait, I'm gonna stop you for just one second. So, um, I wrote this down and I completely skipped over it. Um, in our teams training, when we agreed that we're gonna move the tracking workbook into teams, one of the things that we also discussed is when we have our initial discussion, somebody taking notes and formalizing that in a Word document, so it when it gets logged into Teams, it can be uploaded. And everybody will have the notes. So who would like to do that?
I can do it.
You're all smiling at me, not knowing I'm about to say you're doing it. You'll do it, Dan?
Sure.
All right. So I just wanted to remind us of that kinda new process developed. And then once the chair is picked at the next meeting, you'll send the finalized version of the notes to the chair and that chair would log it into the teams as a task. Sorry, Dan. Um, Doug, go ahead.
Sure, yep. So the growth area overlay and so as I am trying to summarize, it's a hard thing to bring all the pieces together for, but so we have basically older zoning lines and we have a newer comprehensive plan. And the uh, assumed goal here with the new zoning is to utilize the future land use plan and the comp plan as the, at least rough guidance, maybe fine-tuned at the edges and so forth. And the relevance here, bringing it home to the new state legislation, is that the state legislation has specific requirements, um, without home rule authority, um, that need to be applied to a growth area. So there's a policy decision on behalf of the town as to what we use as a growth area for the initial purpose of implementing LD two zero zero three, and I call it LD O three, for both density and affordability. The eight, so there's three different parts to LD O three. You've got the ADUs, which is about to become effective later this week. There's the density and there's affordability. For the purposes of density and affordability, uh, there are different requirements for growth areas. So the policy decision is what are we going to use for a growth area? Given that we're heading towards implementing the future land use map in the comp plan, it seems like we should be, at least for me, it seems like we should be utilizing the growth area as defined in the comp plan. And so, and if if we're gonna follow this track, I think so for temporary purposes, for the purposes of implementing LD O three, particularly the density and affordability, it'd be a temporary growth area overlay. And that growth area overlay would be the foundation for uh, assume sort of sub-zoning districts as a part of the new zoning. And so it's not a exercise, it, we're not wasting effort, if you will, by, and there may be some fine tunes to that. Um, one of my favorite examples is Collie Hill. If you go up Collie Hill, there may be some large lots back there, but they may not have public water. They may have development constraints. And so we may not be able, as a practical matter, to allow increased density up there because of the practical limitations of the site. And one of the elements that I think is very important that the council has weighed in on and and agreed with is with the new zoning, let's try to, let's do our level best to incorporate what we know about the properties. Let's not have a big, huge commercial district in the middle of gray flats where you can't do it. Um, so my proposal is to develop a fine-tuning of the growth area and the future land use utilizing the comp plan as the base. And that initial growth overlay on top of our existing zoning is adopted for the purposes of implementing LD two zero zero three for phase one. And then phase two is to utilize that amoeba, that shape, um, as the uh, totality. And then maybe that gets divided into some separate zoning districts. And so um, with that, so the question that's embedded from all that background is, does that approach bring true to the council? Does that sound like a good approach? And and if not, then are there any uh, suggestions or, um, adjustments to it?
Okay.
I know that's a mouthful.
Did you have any thoughts on that, Mark? Um, yeah, I think the overlay's a good idea. Uh, the only thing I saw on the on the map that you had in here, which is packet page twenty-four, um, I'm assuming the red dotted line is the overlay you were thinking of? Is that right? Village Mixed Youth Growth Area.
Twenty-four. That was showing that was just highlighting that line, yes.
Yeah.
And there, and there's a, if I should have included this, I I'm waiting to connect up with the town attorney. I have a little I'm trying to figure out how to handle the Wellhead District.
Well, so the, I had a couple of things to point out. Was one, the Wellhead District obviously should not be in the growth area here, so we'll have to figure out how to
Exactly.
fix that. Um, and then, um, that Libby Hill Road, most of that property on the other side is the school. So I don't know that it it's advantageous for us to put the whole road in because a good chunk of that property is school property and it's not gonna be developed densely. It's not gonna be developed, it's the school. Um, and then I know Dan had, um, brought up in the past revisiting that residential neighborhood ordinance. So I would just point out that the little tiny Wanda Spruce, that little, that's they're really tiny lots and they're probably all not informing at this point, but maybe they are. But so it may not make any sense. The line's not that far from there, so just may not. It may look like we have a larger growth district than we actually do in reality. Um, but I'm I'm all for the overlay. I think it's a great approach. Um, and it would probably help us with some of the things we're already hitting. Where people are coming to us and we're saying, well, could you do it this way? It's gonna be that way in a little bit. But it isn't there yet, so this will give us a little more flexibility. Dan, what do you think?
Yeah, it's, there's so many, as you said earlier, moving parts, Doug. I think the overlay is is probably the only realistic way of doing it, given that everything underneath the overlay is subject to change. I I struggle a little bit because I think some of the rules, you know, not all the rules are written for this this thing yet. So when you look at the lots that are within this area, you know, to Sandy's point, if you if you get down by Sunset or across in front of Russell there.
Gray Park.
Yeah, Gray Park, thanks. It would be hard, you'd be hard-pressed, I think, to fit another unit. Some of those lots you probably could. But not many of them.
Yeah.
So how much property is actually in the overlay zone that can be developed?
But would you underneath that, you know, identify that residential stamp, which I thought you guys had a pretty good workshop. It was how many years ago?
It was, I don't know, it was a while ago.
Yeah, with the neighborhoods, because that's a lot of their concern, is their neighborhoods are old and small. Small lots.
And that's part of the new zoning.
Yeah, right, exactly, so.
And you can still have growth in a residential area. It just might, you just might want it to still be residential, but perhaps it's multifamily. I mean, like.
Well, yeah, there's lots, some lots, like even in Gray Park, there's, most of the lots are pretty you know, what I call city lots, like in Lewiston, everybody has the same-sized city lot. But there's always that one that has the double lot or the triple lot. So there's a little more room there.
And putting a, but putting a multi, a multi-story, multi-unit building in that development could change it pretty significantly.
It could, but.
Especially when you think about parking. I mean, right now, we don't have a traffic ordinance, so if you, someone builds an ADU on Gray Park and we can't require them to have off-road parking, so now they're parking on the street.
But even if they're not identified, those neighborhoods as being in this growth district, this new law allows them to at least have multiple ADUs and duplexes on their lots, so.
Not if there's not enough room for it.
But I think that's the point, though. Some lots in these neighborhoods might have that room. So regardless of what, and for everyone watching, regardless of what we do, the state has overridden some of our restrictions.
That's great.
And some of this is happening, whether whether you like it, we like it, or we don't. So, but yeah, I think.
I guess that's for me, it's part of what's a little confusing, is I don't know where the boundary is and what we can do and what we can't do.
But I think it's important, Dan, that it adds more weight to that residential tag. And I'm not even sure, I mean, even if you do the residential tag.
Village residential.
Yeah, even if you do that, then you're still LD two zero zero three is still gonna allow them to do certain things. And they're even, if we say you can't have a two-story building here, you know, there's a height restriction on village residential zones that's different than village center proper.
Yeah.
But they're still gonna be able to, you know, add another dwelling or two.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm not thinking that we're gonna be able to prevent them from adding a dwelling, but I.
One attached and one non-attached. Well, I say that for you, but also for those watching. Again, we're we're being overridden on a lot of things right now, so.
Um, I I agree that the overlay makes the most sense, especially given we're looking ahead to the future rather than what we have currently on the books. Just in regards to what Sandy was talking about, about the zones with Libby Hill and the Wellhead. I, in that particular part of town, up twenty-six, um, I I think the comp plan steering committee, if I recall, was really just wanting to capture the fact that development all along Shaker Road was a possibility, especially given the Han- the Hanaford site that has an open lot, which I understand is past the Wellhead. But part of the Wellhead does encompass a large portion of sh- short Shaker Road that potentially could be developed, so. I don't know. We were just talking a minute ago about how we have very limited road frontage and.
Well, I think you have to remember that the next zone beyond this growth is transition and that's still gonna allow frontage.
Right, but it's not wa- it's not as walkable to the.
It's absolutely not walkable.
So I think that's where we were trying to encapsulate most walkability by drawing this map. Um, I think perhaps a better approach go, you know, once we get this district defined, um, more permanently later on, would be to ha- perhaps have the like types of development you could have within that Wellhead on Shaker Road be very specific, so that there's not.
Well, the Wellhead one and Wellhead two are different standards. Is that correct?
They're pretty, pretty similar.
Right now, they're close.
You still, four acres per dwelling unit.
Yeah.
Which is pretty substantial, of course, all under the intended purpose, the purpose of minimizing the cumulative wastewater flow within the two hundred day travel time.
Right.
Yeah, so I think we just need to be careful about that. But I think that LD two zero zero three is written that the water quality has to be a factor in development. So there would be a stopgap there.
Right, so I guess I'm just, I would.
Is that correct?
I just don't wanna eliminate.
I think so, I'm working on that.
I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at is um, we don't know what that's gonna look like ultimately, uh, and I don't, I don't wanna totally eliminate that section of of town from this growth area, cause I think if, as we have limitations and we are specific.
Wellhead one?
One and two.
I'm not, I'm not advocating eliminating Wellhead two, just Wellhead one.
Okay. But yeah, I say.
I see.
Wellhead one is particularly an unwalkable section of town, so I, I don't know.
Well, that's on, um, that's actually.
Most of it's this side.
Most of it's.
Yeah, it's actually, yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure how walkable that road is. That's that's that road that, um, goes down along the Turnpike.
Yeah, I know where it is. Yeah, right, but there's, but part of it's up beyond, before the bridge going out.
Yeah. I mean, it's, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I I think BT T two and BT one, yeah, that's, that whole area is fine.
That's Hanaford, yeah.
I'm just a little concerned about, you know.
I agree with eliminating Libby Hill. You're right that that's not developable, um, as school property, but.
Yeah, that section of it isn't. But yeah, and and you know, that neighborhood's the same problem as Gray Park. So I think if we just identify a village residential neighborhood ordinance or tag where you have some more height restrictions or other restrict, whatever restrictions we're allowed to have, um, then that might be a better way to approach that. But if you quite frankly, I just don't see how anybody's gonna be able to add much density to any of those properties on that, on those streets. Maybe the ones on Chris Street, the last street, maybe there there's more back lots.
I mean, sometimes developers buy up two lots and tear down buildings.
Yeah, that's what they would have to do, yeah, potentially, yeah.
Doug, can you just tell us all about where the lo- rulemaking landed on municipal government's ability to do performance standards like setbacks in growth areas? You know, are we allowed to have a?
Very, very limited. Uh, there was a lot of home rule that was taken away. Very, very limited. There was a lot of home rule that was taken away with this.
Yes.
And I, I think I, and so as the practical, and so the, I should have been more clear with the overall. So my, I'm looking for some policy guidance from the council on the concept of a growth area. And it's very helpful, but the intention was to come back with a revised growth area, if you will, um, that would reflect comments here tonight, as well as what's practically viable. And I, I understand and agree with the, the residential tag. Unfortunately, if the town is going to be timely about getting this on the books, we can put some placeholders in for these residential areas. But, but we've got to have this growth area in place before it presumably happens concurrently with the implementation of the density and affordability aspects of LD oh three.
I guess the reason I'm asking is to try to clarify the, like, I'm trying to support what you're saying, which is we want to try to figure out what, what should the growth area be and with respect to the mandate from LD two thousand and three? And to use Gray, the, um, the circle there as an example, it might be hard to imagine or envision housing going in there, but under LD two thousand and three, it's permitted. So maybe on some of these larger lots, you can see a eight hundred square foot ADU being built on the backside of one of the houses or on the side of it and sharing a dooryard, you know, the big house, little house type of dooryard, or parking or something like that. And just came up a second ago, maybe a developer would buy two of these lots and combine them so that you could fill in the sandwich space in the middle. Those are the kinds of eventualities that I think you're asking the council to consider in def- defining not what's there, but what's possible under two thousand and three that could be coming.
Right, but I think the, the difference is they can do two wherever they have one.
Regardless.
In the growth area, they can do four.
Right.
And so that's my concern with the Wellhead one is it's not a little more density, it's a lot more density. And so I would prefer, you know, given the issues we've had in this area with water, uh, water quality, groundwater testing and that kind of thing.
Just cut it out.
Just to, you know, for the growth area, we can't, as you're stating, Nate, there's, there's very little we can do about the other density bone additions. That's happening everywhere, regardless. But this gives the council over the town the ability to say, where's the four? And where's the two? You know, where are we doubling it? Where are we quadding it? So I just, I, I think we have consensus, we want an overlay, that that's the route to go.
Yeah, I think that's true. Yeah.
Yeah. And so I think it's, you're playing with the lines and coming back to it and, and getting the council to say, yeah, this is where it should be. But that's pretty much the reason why we need that overlay, the, to identify growth areas because the rules are different. One is going to allow substantially more density and the other is more density.
Packet page fourteen has, has a summary that came from the attorney.
Right.
And I, I think there's some questions.
Yeah, so it's.
Do you mind if I ask another question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, Doug, in light of the changes in LD two thousand and three and also the conversations that we've had around, you know, around the Gray Village master plan and sort of seeing, seeing the hub and spoke network of neighborhood centers in and around Gray Village, you know, like go from point to point and sort of see a little spot, a corner or whatever, where maybe, you know, some additional, like a convenience store or a community center or something like that might pop up in time. Given the changes in LD two thousand and three sets the comprehensive plan, would you recommend that whatever overlay district is developed for this, GAO, that the ordinances be sort of like lined up around that? And we try to get as close to what the comp plan envisioned is possible, but just have to work with LD two thousand and three. And there might be some, like, like in, talking about, um, Wellhead one, cutting that out of that overlay really pretty much means cutting it out of that growth zone also, doesn't it?
It, it does. And, and it's not that, so if the, there's a policy decision on behalf, ideally what would happen is the town would implement its new zoning and then LD would be rolled together. As a practical matter, if we're going to try to, if the town is going to try to honor the intent and purpose of LD oh three, we need to get something on the books soon. Now, that growth area could be revisited as an int, as a, uh, part of the rezoning. But we would like, I would, I think it's incumbent, I think it, it's better for everyone if we can be as careful as we can with implementing the overlay four oh three and then fine tuning it with the zoning. That's where I'm.
Yep.
That's, that's the approach, but I think that's.
But ultimately, somewhere down the pike, the zoning's probably going to align more with the overlay as a matter of practicality.
Well, and to your memo, once the zoning is done and the ordinances are updated, there will be no overlay. Just be the zone. So the overlay is temporary.
That's kind of where I'm, yeah, just trying to clarify that.
Yep. Dan?
I, um, yeah, I'm, I'm in favor actually of cutting Wellhead one out of both of them. Just because Wellhead one is under a lot of threat at any given point in time anyways. It's, it needs to be moved, but whether that eventually happens or not remains to be seen. But until then, I think we have to protect it, um, especially in light of some of the other needs we've had recently. I'm also struggling a little bit with the section of the area that's commercial being in this, in this zone too. In that area along.
Dry Meadows Transition?
No.
Or Shaker?
It's actually along Route one hundred.
Spring Meadows, everybody's Spring Meadows.
Lewiston.
But does that go to the future item in his memo about us wanting to have mixed uses, Dan? Is that your concern? To ensure that there's still some commercial there and not just small housing?
My concern, yeah, I mean, we've talked about not allowing residential buildings in commercial zones. So saying that this can be part of the growth area, like, undercuts that.
Unless they wanted to do both.
Yeah, you can have residential and commercial businesses side by side, but you're worried it's going to be more like manufacturing type businesses or?
No, that it's going to be all residential.
I don't think that was the intent of the mixed use. Like, it's not, it's supposed to be commercial and residential.
Let me ask, let me ask that question for you, just to clarify. Can we, are we still going to be able to restrict and say that we want commercial? And if you're going to do residential, residential, it has to be mixed. Is that restriction possible?
That could be, it, that could be done as an integral, as accompanying the growth district. There could be a change to the commercial district standards.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
A, a performance standard.
Go ahead, Dan.
But I'm concerned that in the meantime, that that land will get eaten up for residential by someone. And there's nothing that prevents that from happening if we include this in that, in that area.
So, and again, that, that conceptually similar to that which we just talked about with self-storage. Accompanying the adoption of the growth area, there could be a corresponding interconnected, if you will, piece that changes some of the performance standards for uses in commercial districts.
So simultaneously.
You can limit residential development in a commercial district?
Or you could say maybe the, right on, on cue with self-storage, maybe residential needs to be set back a little bit.
And so you could do commercial. Run, or if you're going to do commercial, then first floor.
I guess I'm, I'm.
Is, I'm, I'm looking at you to say, does that?
No.
No, okay.
I, personally, I don't know why everyone's, that I hear from, who has concerns about growth in the village is so opposed to residential. That's the point. There's a point, is that we have residential growth and we have commercial growth. And the commer, residential growth drives the traffic to the commercial growth. And I, I don't, I don't really, I don't see why it, so if it is residential and it's dense because it's in the density zone, I don't see why that's a problem.
Yeah, we just disagree on that one.
Well, and I think the balance matters, right?
Well, let me finish. I, I don't agree with that. I mean, you can have a lot of residents in the village and that's going to drive some business, but it's not necessarily going to be, it can't be the only source of business or the only kind of business. What business would it drive? If we're going to have a truly diversified tax base, then we need a lot of different kinds of, of businesses coming into the, into this area. Not just, not just ones that, you know, not just stores or, or shops or, um, and the other piece of it is, there's a lot of, you know, you can go to Portland and you can see places where there's supposed to be retail on the first floor and, and residences on the second floor. And that retail space isn't, is, they're having a hard time leasing that out.
Right.
So, you know, I, it's not a panacea to say that you can have commercial on the first floor and residences above it and that that's necessarily going to work. I, I think my frustration with this is I feel like we're being asked to make decisions before I understand the nuances of the impact of what we're doing.
Well, I.
That's why my guard is up.
Okay, two, two points to that. One, we, to my point earlier, you need to have some meat on the bones to have a conversation. So I think planning department's just looking for us to give them some direction so they can pull some detail and, and, and give us more time. I'm, I guess I'm, I'm leaning towards Krista. I understand what you're saying. We definitely only have so much commercial space and people get really wigged out when commercial shows up in their neighborhood. That's just part of life.
Excellent.
Um, but I also know that we have like BD two, which is Northbrook, and I know that hasn't really panned out much. But we also put, um, the property that abuts Northbrook in our village TIF on, on, per request, if I believe the person who owned it, because they can see some potential when the other, um, TIF district expires, that there's some connectivity there. So I, I understand it all, to me, that's like the industrial parks. That's where the big businesses are going. The manufacturing, but maybe even a hotel would be okay there. But for the commercial, traditional commercial along the road, I kind of agree more with Krista because if you go to a lot of the, you know, Build Maine or these other seminars, if you look at the way towns used to be built, that's how it was. Commercial and residence were all mixed together.
I understand that.
And then somewhere along the line, we decided mini malls were the way to go. We started moving all our commercial into these giant open, the main mall, the Auburn Mall. And you can walk through those and, you know, there's same vacancies. A lot of that retail space is changing.
Has anything to do with this.
Well, I think by having just a commercial where you have no resident, we're recreating that. We're shoving all the commercial over here and all the residents over here. And in my mind, you know, I've read enough books and seen that it just seems more viable to have some sort of combination. Now, do you want a manufacturing firm in the middle of somebody's neighbor, neighborhood? Probably not. But then we have other options. We have the business district too, to try to direct them or, um.
The transition zones were meant for the larger businesses.
Where you maybe have something behind on a back lot or something.
I mean, that we define what, what the village core growth area, types of development we want to see, um, in the comp plan. It says right here, this type of growth, or rather, um, new mixed use and commercial development should be permitted to include restaurants, service businesses, and higher density residential developments. Um, because the focus should be on accommodating and providing places for a diversity of small local businesses and services. That, that was the intent of the growth area.
Yeah, yeah.
I got it. I just, you're not going to get my vote.
Well, and that's.
No, not, it's, it, when you look at the percentage of space that we have zoned commercial now, I don't think it's two percent of town.
Right.
So I, I don't think, it's not like we're excluding acres and acres and huge chunks of gray from being developed as residential. And it's such a small space, it's still walkable. It's still, it's the bill. You're just not going to convince me that it's not worth protecting that, 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 those zones as they're currently outlined. So we can move on.
Okay. Well, and, and transition will expand that percent a little bit. It isn't going to, you know, vastly improve it, Dan. But it's going to allow a little bit more mix too. So we are making a little effort there. So the overlay is a yes. And good luck to you with the lines.
Coming back here.
Yeah, you'll come back here and.
Iterative.
One, one point four percent of gray is currently zoned commercial.
There you go. Yeah, so.
So I'm sorry.
What's that percentage again?
One point four.
So I'm, I'm, I'm not buying the idea that somehow we're making it hard for people to build residential developments of any kind by protecting a little bit of commercial space.
I'd point out that we have commercial outside those zones too. So.
We have industrial.
Yeah, and we have, you know, like this couple of solar arrays that came along. We're not in the commercial zone, so.
Okay, so maybe up to three or four percent.
Well, I'm just pointing out, it's, it's, we're, I think we're working on it. You know, we're trying to work on it a little bit. It's not moving, obviously, at the pace you want it to, but I think there's some improvement there. Okay, uh, density. And it looks like you have a couple of questions under that one.
Yes, yep, the very bottom of the council packet, page eleven. And again, this is the, this is the summary. And for anyone watching the meeting, uh, the background is included on the earlier pages of this council packet. This was just an attempt to bring it together and hopefully get as much policy guidance as we can. Borrowing your analogy to put some meat on the bones and bring it back.
So basically, um, the density requirements and that's, and I really appreciate having the table. That made it very easy. So thank our attorneys for digging through that, Kristen. So that's on, um, packet page thirteen and fourteen. Uh, but there are allowed a density, which has been part of LD two zero zero three. And then your question is, do we, we have the ability to allow even more density? And the question is from the counselors, whether we want to or not. And the three questions you have are.
There's minimum requirement that we have to allow. Do you wish to exceed that?
Okay, so the first one is, do we want to allow more than two dwelling units on a vacant lot outside of the growth area?
No.
Dan?
I'm a no.
Yeah.
No.
I'm also a no. Do we want to allow more than four dwelling units on a vacant lot within the growth area?
No.
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 And I'm also a no. And then.
Consensus on this.
Yes. Do we want more than two additional dwelling units on a lot that has one existing dwelling unit? One of those must be within or attached to an existing structure?
No.
You're a no and I'm a no. And Dan, are you writing that down?
Yeah, I am.
Thank you, sir. Uh, yeah, I, I think everybody's probably in the same boat. Um, we, we're not sure exactly what's going to happen with this new density. And so start with the minimum, work our way around it. If, if we want more later, we can always change it. Okay, so number three.
Two, I think.
Oh, two, I'm sorry. Yep. Does the council wish to allow additional density or explicitly prohibit additional density in the instance of a tear down and a rebuild? So we can require the structure to be rebuilt with the same number of dwelling units or allow the structure to be rebuilt subject to the current density standards? And my first question is, can we do this by zone? So could we have one decision for the growth overlay and another decision for the rest of town? Or is it one size fits all? That was my question before.
Believe it can be distinguished between the two. I'd have to verify that.
Okay.
But let's, let's, let's say it can be, for argument's sake.
Um, I'm, I'm sort of of the opinion of where we landed with the ADUs and existing structures. I, I, I don't think someone should be penalized because they have a building on their property already. If this is the rule that we allow these numbers of units, um, depending on whether they're in the growth area or not, I think that they should be allowable whether or not the building is torn down or not. I think it should just be one rule for all properties.
Dan?
Yeah, I agree with that. I think it's too complicated to get into splitting those hairs.
Okay.
I agree with Dan.
Okay. And I would have preferred to just be in the growth area, but I'm outnumbered. So that's a yes. So that's a yes. Nate?
What if the structure that burned down theoretically has more than four units? Would you allow it to be rebuilt to the number of units that were there?
Uh, it, right now, they can do that, but it's whether or not, if it were.
Within a year, it would be, um, a, it would be non-conforming use or non- It would be lo- if it was legitimate, if it was locked in, if they, if they obtained the permits.
It was correctly permitted.
Exactly.
Okay.
Sometimes units get added without permits, in which case you're locked in for what you got permits for.
So that wouldn't change. The difference is that if someone had a one unit and they, it burnt down, they could put the two units or the four units, depending on where they were in town.
Yep.
Um, a similar question came up with the self-storage units. And I think we landed on retaining the new, the same design standards that were currently on the books for new, for the new bill. Didn't, didn't we?
Yeah, it has, it, um.
For replacements.
For replacements.
Yes.
But not the rest of their facility. So like, they lost one of three buildings.
It was contingent upon when the buildings were initially built and if they were there as of the adoption of the standards.
Okay, so we would, we'd let them retain their non-conforming use if it, if it was, I'm just, I'm guessing confused. I just wanna be consistent on how we approach this sort of scenario. I, I'm just.
They'd be allowed to retain what they have. It would actually, it's never seen it pushed this way, but it would actually be a non-conforming structure of record because it might not meet the design standards.
Okay, I know the design standards are different than the, the build, like the building of the unit, but I, I just wanna, the way we kind of think of it, I want it to be consistent. Yeah, I guess I'd be okay with them rebuilding, um, whatever they have currently.
Dan?
Yeah, that seems fair to me. I have, we don't have design standards everywhere though, so.
That's true.
There's instances where that wouldn't apply. If they were replacing a structure, they could build it any old way they want.
Well, and to your point earlier, once we revisit, visit the village design standards, we were gonna kind of catapult those to other districts. I mean, we started in the village and then we were gonna look at it and say, should all duplexes have design standards? Or should all, no matter where they are?
Right.
So that might be something you guys wanna consider in your follow-up.
I mean, I recognize we're not, we're not talking about design standards in that scenario that Nate just proposed.
No.
But I, I'm just thinking about it in the same way, like, you know, do we let people just rebuild the way it was or do we?
Well, it's important that you do bring that up because we do want to have consist- consistency in our ordinances, so. So I think your answer to two is yes. They are allowed, um, we're gonna allow the additional density for tear downs and rebuilds regardless of where they're located.
And then to Nate's question, if they already had more than four?
Yeah, they were permitted, as you said, the current restrictions.
Existing permitted number.
Yeah.
If they exceed, then they can, then they were legitimate, they can rebuild as they were.
Right.
Okay.
Right, yep. Uh, number three, for affordable housing projects, does the council wish to allow density of more than the minimum of two and a half times the base density of the zoning district in which the housing is located? And if so, to what extent?
I had, I needed questions answered in order to answer this question.
Go right ahead.
So I, I guess I, I don't know what the base is for, um, the districts we're looking in, right, I guess is, so.
Uh, village centers, twenty thousand, lot size, ten thousand per dwelling unit. Uh, VC and VCP, uh, commercial is forty thousand and the lots, uh, I'm trying to remember the minimum area per dwelling unit with public water and commercial, it's either twenty or forty. It's, it's similar, it's conceptually similar in medium density to the, the minimum area per dwelling unit is cut in half for most districts for a lot that is served by public water.
So what does that equate to for units, I guess? That's ultimately where I.
Depends on your lot size. I'm trying to be argumentative.
Well, I think if you use like the Avesta Housing example, that might help her. What was the density bonus that they ended up? When we made that change, it was, but we restricted, was it fourteen acres?
It was fourteen, yeah.
Thirteen acres they had to have.
Yeah.
For multifamily?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm assuming all affordable housing projects will be multifamily. Maybe that's the wrong assumption.
Yeah, well, you're, you're weighing in on what she's talking about, not you, Hannah.
No, I, I, it's just, it's a good question. I don't see that it would have to be, but probably, yeah.
Would, yeah.
It's the only way you can gain the economies of scale.
Right.
Yeah, and my, I was kinda thinking the same way because the way that I read your memo and the way it's written, this is already kind of restricted because it, this only applies in the growth area and there are public water requirements. And there's, there's mention of sewer, but in gray, that would be septic.
Yeah.
So obviously, it would be much harder and, and be a different, um, septic system design for something that's far more dense than what is currently allowed. So by definition, with those restrictions, it already seems like even if you allow the two and a half times.
Septic system isn't gonna lie.
Yeah, it's not, it's gonna really restrict it. Um, and I liked our approach and I'm not sure we can do it anymore, but with the, making sure that a certain, you know, you need to have a s- a certain size lot to start with, um, for larger projects. But it's like, when I was thinking about this, like, oh, yeah, we should do that, and then, oh, I don't know. And then the Avesta Housing project is an example of the affordable housing projects. I think those who pass this law are really trying to push. They don't want the two-unit or four-unit affordable because it doesn't really make a dent. They want the larger twenty-five unit structure. And if you do it right, it's using less space and it's located right. You've got walkability and access to services, so I'm, I'm leaning towards, yeah, I'd be okay with it. But I don't know if I wanna go above the minimum yet either. Yeah, go ahead.
So the statute says that for affordable housing, you have to allow two and a half times.
Yeah, this is above, yeah.
Yep, and then the, the second point, which we haven't really touched upon, is that the, the state minimum lot size law, in, in the absence of public sewer, um, the state minimum lot size law allows three hundred gallons per day on a twenty thousand square foot lot. And so throughout, and this is, this is also in the statute, just sort of as a point of information, for ADUs, for affordable, for density, if you exceed that wastewater density of three hundred gallons per day on twenty thousand square feet or whatever the ratio happens to be for the particular lot, then it's going to require a minimum lot size waiver. And so the, that statute says on point that you need to adhere to the minimum lot size law. So the, the point of that is that.
There is stopgap.
There is a stopgap. There will be, uh, you know, putting aside wellhead and so forth, so that is built into the statute.
Okay.
So, do you, what I hear you saying, correct me if I'm wrong, is that if you don't have the area to take care of the septic, then you're limited by that and you're not gonna be able to build the building. But I heard you say the word waiver, so can that be waived?
There, there is an ability for a waiver in the minimum lot size law. And one of the questions that I'm wrestling with is whether or not there should be a, a, a standard, I don't know if we can do it, added that says minimum lot size waivers are not allowed.
That would be my choice.
I don't know, and, and of course, this is a new statute. It hasn't been tested and I don't know, I'm trying to figure out who to ask, actually. I have the question, but I don't have the answer.
Right, and then the other issue I had with it is the only two parking for every three units. And, and right now, you know, once, once Main Street in Yarmouth is done and we revamp, you know, panel to change the parking here, and we, we have parking on the village gateway in the village area, that might not be as big of a deal and we're gonna have to have a traffic ordinance, obviously. But that does concern me a little bit that, you know, where are all these cars gonna park? If the developer's only required to do two spots for every three units.
It has come up in the Avesta conversation, the planning board, because the number of parking units that they're, have in their plan for the new building is considerably less than what the existing structures have. So, and they basically used their analysis of their own properties in basically making the planning board comfortable with the fact that they have fewer slots.
Well, it's interesting because if you look at Wyndham, they're putting up a couple of very large buildings and there's very little parking. But I think the larger the building, and I'll, I'll go back to my daughter's building in, in Texas, which is, you know, five city blocks and six stories high, whatever it is. And they have a parking garage, but you can drive through that parking garage and there's plenty of parking. And there are not enough spots for everyone, full occupancy, I'm sure of it. But there's enough people who work different times and are off at a doctor's appointment, you know, whatever, visiting friends or they only have one car or whatever, that it works. So, yeah, I'm, I'm a little puzzled by it myself, Dan, the whole parking. And until we have a better option, it concerns me a little bit. I see in the future, there'll be better options. People will be able to park on the street and we'll have a parking ordinance and we'll have a space for them to move their vehicles to, but right now, we're not quite there. So do we wanna stay with the two and a half times for now or do we wanna go higher?
One, one other question. How does the, I mean, this is strictly about affordable housing projects?
Yep.
I just wanna be clear.
Affordable, maybe not, in, an affordable housing structure.
Okay, because an affordable housing structure doesn't have to be like.
It doesn't have to be twenty-seven.
No, it doesn't have to be twenty-seven units or twenty-five units. So, in the scenario where it's not, we've set a maximum square footage for ADUs. How, how does that figure into this calculation?
Think the statute is silent on that. I.
How would it affect the dense, in other words, does our limitation, maybe this is a better question. Does our cap on the size of an ADU run foul of this density calculation?
Separate, three separate sections of LD oh three. ADU, density, affordability.
Yeah. So they don't.
It does, has no bearing. The, the ADU does not overlap into affordable, if that's your question.
It's not, yeah, that's, so, ADUs are not considered part of affordable housing projects?
Not necessar- you could have an affordable ADU, I suppose, but, but they're intended to be separate within the confines of the statute.
I understand. I'm just trying to, so what you're telling me is no, that the density conversation we're having here isn't in conflict with our cap on the size of an ADU?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, let me see where you might, Nate?
Doug, under O three, as best you can tell, would a, a development the size of the Avesta, um, proposed developments still have the same process for permitting that it does now? Or would that process have to be changed to meet O three?
There's a provision. I think that there's some qualitative language that the permitting has to be something to the effect as streamlined as possible. I would think that the, as a practical matter, I think the town has some options with that. It, uh, my off-the-cuff recommendation in response to LD oh three, trying to keep in spirit with that, would be to set a series of performance standards that if those are met, then the permitting process could be streamlined if there were one or more waivers. This is just a concept. If there were one or more waivers that were necessary, maybe it would go to planning board, but that would, maybe it could go to staff review committee as an example.
To Dan's point earlier about staff review, right.
And, and can you imagine in the occasion of a, a project that exceeds the two and a half times density, maybe treating it like a major subdivision or treating it as a CZA?
It would trigger subdivision. That's a really good point.
Yeah, to the scale of like a subdivision, yeah.
So pretend, I mean, I'd have to check.
Higher standard of review.
To check with legal on this, but it theoretically, stepping on a limb here, it could go to staff review committee for site plan for that component. And, but subdivision has to go to planning boards, uh, subdivision statutes crystal clear about that.
So there, there could be like a provision put in place for something that exceeds two and a half to go through a process like that, possibly.
Like a tier, a tiered approach.
Would you recommend that approach?
Sure, I, I think it's at some thresholds, looking at, um.
Outside of what we're not governed to do by O three, we could set some other thresholds.
Which, which understandably begs the question of where the town of Gray is going to land with the multifamily standards. There's multifamily in the village, multifamily outside of the village. To me, they're, they're kinda separate.
I mean, contract zoning is available at any time for anyone. If they hit, hit something, they may not meet the standard, but they can certainly come in and talk to you about it and you fill out the process with them and decide whether there's a balance to it or not. I mean, the purpose of the contract zoning is if we have the rules set and they wanna ex- they want a waiver that is, is above and beyond, the town has to get something in exchange for it. It has to be beneficial to the town. And that, once again, like a seesaw, has to at least be even, but it really should be more of a benefit to the town than what's being asked.
And typically, most municipalities that have contract zoning eligibility, if you will, on the books, contract zones are not typically, uh, approved solely for density purposes. There, there needs to be, as you pointed out, there has to be a, a balance. If you're gonna, the philosophy is if you're going to exceed the parameters of the duly adopted zoning, then there should be a community benefit.
Right, right. So back to the two and a half, do we want to stay at two and a half to start with? Do you wanna go higher? Dan's gonna answer first.
Well, I, I think I'd stay at two and a half just because, like everything else, we have the chance to revisit it. And it just feels like, um, I don't know what I would increase it to at this point in time. You know, I don't have enough information to go, well, three would be better. So I guess my thought is to just stick with the two and a half.
I think we're gonna see that a lot of towns are gonna just stick with what they're being forced to do and then kinda just brace for impact, so to speak, to see.
Until we figure out what the actual, like you say, the impact is, it's hard to, to change the variables.
What's the need and what are the developers gonna like out of this? You know, they're gonna look at this and say, you know what, I'm gonna go after this section here because this is gonna make more sense for me. I mean, you just don't know. Krista?
Yeah, I think I'm, I'm landing the same place Dan is. Like I, I think we have too many unanswered scenarios and we should just stick with what's being required right now and then we can always revisit it later if we're finding it's limiting factor for people.
Stay with the two and a half.
Yeah, for me, I'm the same and I, I'll add the complexity of the fact that we haven't implemented our comp plan yet.
Yep.
And that's the other piece that's, if we had had our comp plan fully implemented and we were just dealing with O three.
I might feel a bit different about a lot of these things.
Yeah, I think we'd be, well, I think we'd be able to dig in a little more. Right now, we really can't dig in, so.
But I just feel like we could inadvertently be making, implementing the comp plan harder to, I don't wanna inadvertently do that.
Yeah, that's a good point too. Yeah, I hadn't thought of that. So that's a no. We're gonna stick with the two and a half.
Thank you.
For now. Uh, affordable housing, still on that. Does the council wish to extend the affordability requirement beyond the thirty years required by state law? And this is, in order for them to qualify, they have to sign a paper saying it's for thirty years.
It's actually part of the town review to make sure that the covenants are legitimately binding for a minimum of thirty. Do you wish to go beyond that?
I think thirty is good.
That's fine.
Yeah, my, my one hesitation though is I just recall, and if I misquote her, I apologize in advance. I recall Ann Gass saying something about her disagreeing with, with these thirty-year requirements on affordable housing. I don't recall what her reasoning was, but I'm.
But she didn't think they were long enough?
Yeah, I think she wished they were longer, permanent, yeah.
Yeah, I, actually, you know what, I think, um, I think she was talking about some, uh, a different approach that they use in Vermont. Um, where they, it, it's a, it's a piece of property that is built as affordable housing. It's forever. And there's, what the difference is. housing, it's forever, and there's, what the difference is, there's churn. And they have s- sections of it that aren't, people stay there for twenty, thirty years, but they're expected, when they buy their home, to turn it over for the same, to, to keep it in affordable status. Uh, it's almost like a community rather than just a, an affordable housing project in a town, kinda thing. So, I think that might've been, but I don't know, I'd have to ask.
I, I would have to ask her, too, I don't recall specifically, but, I don't know, I, I, she just has a lot of background in that, and so that gave me pause when reading this, cause I don't have as much knowledge around, um, the affordability, um, timeline here, so.
Well, the other piece to worry about is if we require fifty years in Gray and we're trying to attract affordable housing and other towns are sticking at thirty, and those developers are gonna probably go to the, well, a lot of, I shouldn't say that, a lot of the developers outside of organizations that run affordable housing, they build it and they leave, somebody else manages it, so I shouldn't say that, that may not be. Did you have your hand up, Dan?
Um, as far as this rule is concerned, when you sell the property twenty-five years from now, are you selling it for the original price?
It's in the rule, the keeping a pri, having a property affordable for the first owner is easy, the, the real loggerhead has been how to keep it affordable.
I understand that, but I guess, I'm just looking for.
So I, I think it's, there's rent control, so I don't know that it dictates the price of the sale, but when you're bought, you're selling it to a prospective buyer, they have to understand their, their rent is restricted. So, and I, I think it's like a hundred and twenty percent of the medium HUD.
For, for, for gray. For purchase properties, because eighty percent for rental units.
Yeah, so I think that that's the, the piece that has to stay on there.
It's on, uh, the next council packet page, page thirteen, three quarters of the way down.
So there is a restriction, Dan, is what I'm trying to say, I'm just not saying it very well.
Yeah, I guess, I was just trying to understand, you know, after the thirty year lapse piece.
Then they're free to do whatever they want.
Because the price of property thirty years from now will be significantly different than the price of property now, so.
Yeah, so.
And you also think about the life, I mean, buildings have a lifetime themselves, and in thirty years, you're gonna be looking at probably doing some significant renovations to a building, you know, you've got roofs and other things that wear out. So I, I think I'm okay with the thirty year myself.
Just say, some of the sensitivity around this time, thirty year mark, is because some of the building, some of the housing that was built under this provision thirty years ago is starting to come out of it, and people are being dis, yes, displaced by market rate rents, and there's, you know, a lot of upset and turmoil around that. So, I think it's a major issue. Once a building comes out of that, um, provision, it can be rented for whatever the, the property owner wants it, they generally don't dispose of it, because this is when they're gonna start making money on it, it's a long-term investment. And, um, notwithstanding certainly the maintenance issues there, it's still profitable for them to keep them, so.
Well, right now, rents are, are crazy.
I'll just add to that, that notwithstanding that sensitivity, the, the market does not favor new construction for this sort of thing right now, so putting another obstacle in the way of it could, to your point, be a serious deterrent.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I think, is it thirty, thirty for now? Yeah, thirty for now. And then, uh, does the council wish to advise on whether entity would be, which entity would be the party acceptable to the municipality to enforce the affordability provision? And I had a question on this, because in one, somewhere in your note, and I didn't put the page number, it says that the main department of economic and community development is going to adopt the rules to enforce the affordable housing requirements? So, I'm not sure if that, I, I wasn't sure if we could answer this question yet or not.
Who are they gonna make the response?
Yeah, are they gonna end up designating a certain entity to do that?
Yeah, and so, on council packet page sixteen.
Okay.
Um, number three is, this is the language straight from the statute. My, my reading, my understanding of what they're trying to do here is, at the time at which the affordable housing gets approved by the town through whatever process, there's a requirement in the, in the middle here that recorded the registry for the benefit, um, and it's the third line down, the fourth line down in number three, and enforceable by a party acceptable to the municipality. I'm hopeful that some state entity, main housing authority or others, is going to be involved with that, and that the town's involvement is limited to the approval process.
And identifying.
Making sure that it's in place and meets the standards, and then, it's very, it's conceptually right in line with a conservation easement for a piece of property where the town, if it was required, uh, in subdivision, as an example, which it's not, but, um, there's a separate entity that enforces the restrictive covenant. And I'm hoping, for taxpayers of Gray's sake, that municipality is not going to be responsible for enforcing that.
Yeah, cause to my, my mind is the planning department, but then who? And then you're talking about having to have staff time, which is another unfunded mandate. So, yeah, I would.
And how would you even necessarily be informed?
And how would you even, yeah, you'd have to literally go find out who was being charged what, and make sure that the calculations all match to this.
It's, it's complicated, because.
We'd be hiring a person, exactly, it's like the short-term rentals.
Planning can't be enforced, so.
Yeah.
And so.
It would be the code enforcement.
It would be, I meant, yeah, planning, I meant, I put you guys together, planning.
The town assessor could conduct some of that, the affordability analysis, but it would be a cost to the town.
Yeah, so I would say unknown, I guess, right now, unless they force us to identify pending the rules, cause, yeah.
What did, so I guess the, the policy question, maybe we didn't state it, is, so, is the council supportive of seeking a separate party, not the town, that would be responsible for ensuring that it stays affordable?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And hopefully, it's a state agency that doesn't cost us anything.
Cause that way, we're not jammed in the middle of all kinds of.
Well, it's just, there's, like, Nate just said, you know, Lauren would do a piece, Code would do a piece, somebody else would, you know, you're the ones getting the covenant, so it's.
Well, Nate, just the tracking of.
Yeah, crazy. All right, we're running up hard on seven here, so multi-family standards is our next section. So, does the council support amending the definition of multi-family development, too? And I think the difference here, and I compared it quickly, was the two or more, go ahead.
Say, so, so the concept here, so right now in the zoning ordinance, we have multi-family development. Uh, what we're proposing to do, uh, in connection with implementing LDO three, is to have multi-family structure, like one multi-family structure on a lot versus multi-family development, where you would have two or more, uh, multi-family structures on the same lot. And to make that distinction, and to utilize that distinction for the purposes of implementing the density and the affordability. That's the concept, I think it makes a lot of sense.
I think we actually need to answer question two before we can answer question.
Yeah, yeah. So does the council support adding the state definition of multi-family dwelling in the, in our zoning ordinance? And so, multi-family dwelling is defined as a structure containing three or more dwellings.
I'm, I'm fine with that distinction.
I don't see any value in having it be different.
So, I agree with them.
Okay, adopt the state.
So then, one.
Okay, sorry.
Does the council support amending the definition of multi-family development, too? And then, a lot which contains two or more multi-family dwellings, two or more duplexes, three or more single-family dwellings, or any combination of buildings containing three or more dwelling units?
Does this, is this our recommendation, our language, or is this the state's proposed language?
It's a combination.
So for doing two, do we wanna do one?
Yes.
That's what I'm wondering, like, one is coming from the planning department, not from the state.
Two is from the, the statute.
Right.
And so, this is very similar to like daycare, where we try to bring our definitions in line.
So, we're in the multi-family dwelling versus multi-family development, I'm struggling a little bit with the distinction.
It's more than one dwelling.
Yeah, so you could have one multi-family dwelling with three or more units, and that be the only development, just one building. A develop, a development would include more than one building.
It just seems, um, if our description of a multi-family dwelling is a structure containing three or more dwelling units, then why couldn't we just say that development is more than one structure?
It wouldn't work with ADUs, for one example.
Cause it's more than one dwelling unit, than one structure.
If you had a detached ADU.
So it's not considered a multi-family unit, but it has more than one dwelling unit?
I don't, I mean, I'm sorry, I may be being wooden-headed.
No, no.
Now, if, because of the ADUs, you can now have multiple dwelling units on your property, um, but it's, but it's not considered, but it's not considered a multi-family dwelling.
It's a single-family home with an ADU.
Right. The distinction is made at three single dwellings, whereas two would be just, right, your house and an ADU in the backyard. It's a little arbitrary.
I defer to the group, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm just not.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's confusing. It's very confusing.
I mean, my, my concern with the development sentence, um, is that we're, the only word we're amending, from what I, what I understand, is the word two on the beginning of the sentence.
From one instead to two.
Two.
Yeah.
But then, if you do the math, so if we're changing the definition of a multi-family dwelling to three or more dwelling units, two multi-family dwelling units would result in six units.
Right.
Two or more duplexes would have involved, is result in at least four units.
Right.
Three or more single-family dwellings would result, result in at least three, but then it says any combination of buildings containing three or more dwelling units kind of conflicts with our definition of a multi-family dwelling. So I would be in favor of changing the word three in the development, in that last part of the sentence, to four, four more, but, and changing the single family, I don't, but then that complicates the single family one. I, yeah, I understand your confusion with the language, Dan.
Yeah, well, and we're just trying to categorize.
Right.
I mean, the density requirements are still the density requirements, but when does something become multi-family?
So can we remove duplexes?
Well, it is multi-family if they're connected.
A duplex is not a multi-family?
Well, especially if it's more than one.
Right.
Here's an, here's another question. What is the distinction between two single-family units and three single-family units with respect to a multi-family development?
Right.
Like, you could simplify the whole thing by just saying, a lot which contains two or more dwellings, and just eliminate the rest of it, but there seems to be some distinction between two and three single-family units. Am I reading that right?
Yep, no, I think we may need to, to flush this out a little bit, that the intention here was to, as we implement LDO three, particularly with the density, uh, and the affordability, to introduce terms that are going to work for a future uses table in the growth area.
Right.
We're trying to plant the seed, almost literally.
Yeah.
So, why would we treat two single-family dwellings separately, differently than three single-family dwellings in the zoning?
Maybe we don't need to, I think.
That's kinda what I'm wondering.
It's a good point.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause if you eliminate the single-family designation here.
Then it wor, it works better.
It works, or change it to two.
Just say two dwellings.
Yeah, right, right.
Two or more dwellings.
Two or more dwellings.
Multi-family dwellings.
Okay, we can, yes, excellent points.
I mean, unless that conflicts, unless that conflicts with the ADU, which has two dwellings.
And, and that's what we're trying to, again, it's looking ahead to the uses table for the future districts, that, that's what we're trying to do.
I suspect you're gonna, you guys are gonna come up with a definition, and then as you're moving along, you're gonna have to keep looping that. I'm serious. You know what I mean?
Well, yeah, I think.
Cause there's separate categories.
So, what, so if Doug finds that there is a need to make that distinction based on lining up with other stuff around ADUs, are you okay with that, or do you wanna revisit that?
I would say, have more conversation about it with this feedback, and then come back with the new, new, and we'll take another stab at it.
Sounds good.
Cause you're right, if there is a distinction, then you'll be able to tell us.
This, I figure it's gonna take a couple workshops to get through this.
This is endless workshops, I'm rolling in my head, five, six, seven workshops. Okay, well, between this and the comp plan and the zoning, and there's a lot of workshops ahead. Okay, third one, does the council support creation of separate performance standards for multi-family dwellings and for multi-family developments?
So this, this is a high, so if, if we have the allowance for a multi-family structure on a lot versus multiple multi-family structures, should there be different performance standards for those two different situations?
What do you mean by performance standards? Do you mean design standards, or things like buffering and such?
All of it.
All of it, okay.
Marty's striking out as a no. I like it when you jump in.
I think that you, I think that you have to, to some extent, because the impact of multiple structures on a lot is gonna be different than a single structure on a lot.
That was the reason.
And it, and depending on the lot size and where the lot's positioned, and what kinda lot it is, it just feels like there's a lot of variables there, so.
Yeah.
I, I would think to start, it would be safer to, to separate those two.
Well, and it could almost encourage that smaller footprint, less impervious surfaces, if we did the standards right.
I think of the weak sill.
That's exactly what I'm thinking of, because their whole waiver was, we're gonna do less buildings, you're gonna have more open space, and they needed, and that was a problem.
Yep.
And all they needed was another, how many feet?
It wasn't much.
Footprint and height, maybe?
Yeah, yeah, because you wanna, you wanna encourage that, because that would've been a better community. And when you look at, when I was talking about us looking at the open space that they did in this, this Pennsylvania, Ann actually dug this up, that's exactly what it was. You could see the option one, two, and three, and the difference was just so clear. Like, that is a better subdivision, you know, it wasn't apartments, but it was a subdivision, and it's like, why aren't we doing that? And it, you know, and for those people who are living there, less costly for them, because there's less impervious surface that they have to maintain for the rest of their residency.
Yep.
So, yeah, I agree, I think that, and if we can try to make it advantageous for them to do it one way versus the other, that's more beneficial to the sound, the town, we should definitely do it.
Carrot approach.
Yes.
Much like the open space subdivision to some extent.
The density bonuses.
Density for the multiple, multi-unit dwelling, whatever they're called.
Whatever they're gonna say, build what you want, that's what we're gonna call it.
The multi-multi.
You know, because there's, with all of these structures, there's, you know, there's sidewalk issues, there's stormwater issues, there's septic, you know, stormwater and sidewalks, you know, I wanna be getting some money for either extending sidewalks or creating them to begin with, for stormwater. You know, could have the same issue with one of these facilities with stormwater that you do with Gumby's.
Yep, depending on the size.
And so, you might wanna, you know, enter into some sort of licensing for stormwater for this, so, yeah, I think they, I think the impact of multiple structures is likely to be exponentially greater than just one structure.
That was where we were coming from, exactly.
Absolutely. All right, and then we have a multi, this little list here, does the council have any input on the following aspects of multi-family development and multi-family structures? And, again, I think this is just throwing things out there to start with, so there's gonna be, there's nobody getting tied in here to any specific, but building height?
I think this is why the chief was here, I had a quick conversation.
Yeah, that's okay. He's like, I'm out.
Sorry, sorry.
It's gonna take him till seven, I'm out.
So, where, I think where the chief is coming from, in the building, the IPC, the National Building Code as well, there's a very, there's a lot of variables with, um, how close the buildings are, how tall the buildings are, how many units are in the buildings, what's the access to the rear of these multi-family structures, et cetera.
Yeah, so I, I, and I read that in there, too, the building height and the minimum separation from a public safety standpoint. So that was kinda my notes here, was the Clark block example was pointed out as, that's not a bad thing, because, you know, they're, it's almost an attached unit, and so it fits in the village. But at the same time, it really depends, is it sprinkled? Does, is there an, an easy access for the firefighters to get into the building? Where would they park the truck if they were fighting the fire? Uh, could they get around to the back? Where would they park the truck if they were fighting the fire? Uh, could they get around to the back of the building, that kinda thing, so.
All that's been a big, not a big issue, but has been, there's been a fair amount of back and forth with Avesta's plans and these issues.
Yeah. Yeah, so I, I think that whatever is done, there should be, yeah, we're allowing up to X, but with the condition that they're able to meet certain standards, and that gives the flexibility to say, if you're not sprinkling that building, you can't have that height. You have to, you know what I'm saying? That's kinda the way I was thinking, I don't know. Same with the minimum separation.
I think, and the building codes are relatively mechanical, as well as the NFPA codes. I guess what we were trying to drive at here is, does the council have any input on, as an exam, this is looking ahead to, excuse me, multifamily structure performance standards. Does the council have input on how many stories it should be in the village? Should there be decreased buffers in the village? Should there be, uh, build two lines instead of ten-foot setback lines? Um, should there be less buffering in the village, and obviously we can't bring closure to all this, but in order for Kristen and I to put a first draft of different standards for multifamily, any input you had would be helpful.
Yeah, what was the Weeks Hill, was it three floors? Is that what broke the bank?
It was, it was three floors, yeah.
Instead of two?
Yeah.
And, and, you know, you look at the Clark block, and that's two.
And the buildings were closing together, yeah.
Yeah, I could see going to three, if, but it would have to meet standards, it would have to have, you know, some standards to it, to make sure that it's safe.
Okay.
Um, but if we're gonna meet our density, and we're talking ten or fifteen years down the road here, we're gonna need taller buildings.
I would agree with three, if the third floor was a sloping roof that went back from the street side to change the,
Right.
you know, the, the physical feeling of the height of the building.
Well, you don't want blocks.
Um, but I think I'd have some other suggestions too, I think.
Yeah, for some other.
I, I know that from the residents, I've heard from, they, they really don't want structures that are too tall in the village. And I, I can see the point of view. Um, I'll just say that, um, I was at the G P Cog Assembly last month, their, the presentation, the presenter was, um, a developer of affordable housing. He was really interesting, and he's done a lot of work, um, locally, um, but I, I think one of the points he made was that things like height restrictions are, are problematic when he's looking to build, because what they, what they wanna be able to do is to go in and build what's best for them, which I mean, is not surprising to a developer point of view. So I, yeah, I don't, I guess I struggle, cause I do, I don't wanna create all these restrictions and then have nothing built, so I'm just, I'm struggling with that.
But I think like the, I think that if you do, um, you know, two full stories with a sloped roof for a third story, and you get into sort of a, a modified, like, unanswered roof, you still have very usable space, but it tilts the top of the building back away from the sidewalk, which I think feels a little different, um, that's just like.
Well, and quite frankly, those units would be good for people just starting out, and, you know, it's a little more chic.
Well, and they're not necessarily smaller, I mean, they, 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 they would be probably smaller, but they're not.
I don't feel that way.
I think the exterior design of the building makes you think of it as a shorter building than if it was a block of square of three floors.
Well, and everything's costing more, so, I mean.
The Douglas House?
Oh, maybe.
I think that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, similar to that.
Okay. Yeah, and I mean, to, to Kristen's point, I think Avesta was the same thing. They came in, they're like, if, if I can do this in one building, we have the money to do it. And, and most affordable housing developers are, are looking to make enough money to do their next project. They're, they're rolling, it's, yeah, it's the economy of buildings, so. I'm, I'm okay with starting out with a certain, you know, saying, let's go, I mean, three stories is like groundbreaking in gray. It's a good start, and then, you know, maybe if you have a developer come in and say, you know, if I could do this fourth floor, or if it's a certain location, that's gonna inform a lot of the changes down the road.
But we don't wanna lose those developers, because we have these rules on the books now, you know what I mean?
But, yeah, you could have, you could have, there could be, you know, a formula such that you might have, you might have to be set back from the street further if you build a four-story building than if you build a three-story building.
Or where matters too.
So, you know, I think that, I think there are a lot of options there, I don't know how we give you guidance on all of them, but.
Right, I guess I'm hesitating setting a strict limit everywhere, because maybe that's not applicable in a way that's effective for someone who wants to come in here and develop in different areas of town, you know, well, this is all the growth area, but there are parts of the growth area where potentially would be appropriate to have a larger building, or, or set back from the road.
I mean, if you're in the, especially if you're right in the village center.
Right.
I mean, but then if you start getting in.
Well, village property can be different from.
Yeah, and then if you start getting into one of these older neighborhoods, you know, having a four-story building show up when everything else is single family homes, it's gonna be, cause a little angst.
It would.
I mean, they probably would be okay with a two-story or something, but a four-story is gonna change it considerably. Nate?
Well, I just wanted to corroborate what Counselor Chapel was saying, that developers wanna build four and five-story affordable housing units, and if it was in a location like the Avesta project at the end of Hancock, perhaps that would not be as, it would be more hidden and less prominent, and maybe you would allow something like that, though. Um, I'd just say something I've said before, that in the absence of an economic development official or any other, um, calling card for the town, your zoning ordinance is your calling card. And if the developers look and see that they're restricted from doing projects that cash out for them, they, they might not come. And maybe that's fine, but.
Yeah, well, and just to that point, I, I think, you know, this, the fact that we don't have sewer and public water everywhere, again, a lot of this is gonna, there are things we can say we wanna do, and then there's reality of what can actually done.
Without sewer, you're not gonna build five, four or five-story buildings on the main street. You're just not gonna do it.
You're not, you're right, but perhaps down the road.
But I think, can we do, can you do the, can you do the, not, I don't wanna say carrot stick, that's wrong, but can you get bonuses for, for instances, you know, if you, if you set back from the street a little bit more, you can go up a little higher, if you create a public space like that.
Yeah. That was Doug's idea.
Yeah. Alright, go ahead.
Oh, no.
No, that's, that's a good illustration of it.
We wanted to avoid canyons, and you, you thought the setbacks allowed more of the light in.
See, the porch on it, this, this sort of, this would be the first floor here, but, um, the concept is of front porches, build two lines, front porch, and then the sto, the stories step back as they go up.
Yeah.
Was the, Nate and I have conceptually discussed this, as opposed to more of a wall.
Yeah.
I mean, I, it's an idea, but, yeah, I think it's a particular kind of architecture that's not, you're sort of freezing yourself into, I'd like, I'd like to come up with something more flexible.
I think, you know, to your point, design standards, like, again, my daughter's giant building looks like it belongs in Tuscany, Italy. You know, it's just, it's really a nice looking from the outside. You can't tell how many floors it is, you really can't. And then you get in there, and you're walking around, and every hallway looks exactly the same, it's like a giant labyrinth, and you know there's a lot of floors.
There are architectural things that you could do, but.
Yeah, just to disguise the building.
An appearance of a larger building.
Places like Saratoga Springs, where they have frontages like that, and then a mezzanine level, and then a step back, and another step back, and it gets taller, it's really beautiful, but.
No, that's one opinion, yeah.
Fair enough.
Okay, so we'll, since it's seven o'clock now, so we'll say, start with the three floors, and we'll go from there. Minimum separation, and again, I, I really think buffering, setbacks, minimum separation, all need to be some type of.
That's to be flexible.
Flexible, like a range, um, and either they, if they're, you know, either do the carrots for them to get reductions, or the type of lot they have, you know, what they're bringing to the town. I don't know how to do it, but I think there should be a list that allows that flexibility, and the more it makes sense, and the more we're getting from it, the less they have to do this stuff.
Yeah, I mean, the planning board had some suggestions around, um,
Yeah.
um, those items. I think they said some setback from the road is preferred, um, if it's residential use, and that, um, they support buffering to parking, but not necessarily to buildings, and don't wanna see pavement to the edge of the road, I mean.
Yeah, we were talking about no, yeah, it's the same with having the parking out front. But I would add to that, the parking, the buffering is like the, um, standards for stormwater or fuel tanks. And I think of the Cumberland Farms, where they were gonna have that kinda open pit for their stormwater, and it's like, we don't wanna have, see that either, so I think buffering is gonna be dependent on the element and, and location, and, but to ma, to, to make it as flexible as possible, so that we're not eliminating projects that make sense. Does that sound right to everybody? Dan, you're kinda.
Well, I am hesitant, because there's a massive, you know, when you start talking about design standards, and you start s, talking about setting, um, you start coming up with formulas for the, either the setback or the distance between buildings. I mean, there's just a huge amount of things that you have to think through there, and I, I just don't feel like we're prepared in any way, shape, or form to be doing it. It feels kinda like.
Too complicated?
Well, it just feels like, um, it feels like we're creating only a fraction of what we really need to create in order to do this correctly, I guess that's the way I feel. It's kinda like the duplex design standards in the, in the village, you know, we did, we kinda, same sort of situation. You know, we wanted to get something on the books, we got something on the books, it's better, but it's not what we want. Are we gonna get back to that ordinance anytime soon to fix the things that we don't like about it?
Well, you are now, because you're gonna have to do it for this, but yeah, I see your point.
I just, I'm, I just feel like.
There's some tools out, floor error ratios as an example, that's a good tool. You can designate those per, per level. So, hopefully we don't need to reinvent the wheel.
Yeah, well, and to, you're, you know, I think you laid out a good option for the separation between the commercial and the self-storage earlier. And so I think once we start getting a few of these, and maybe the village's design standards weren't a hundred percent, but they moved us forward, and I think after you start seeing some of that, it helps inform the next conversation.
They move you forward, but when you create a building that's got a life of fifty, sixty, seventy years, you're stuck with that until you get to move forward again.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I, I don't really feel that, like, that's moving forward.
Yeah, no, that's a fair point, you gotta get it right early on.
You really don't have, like, multiple chances at that, because that house is gonna stay there now for.
Yep, sign ordinance, you know?
Yep.
Alright, performance standard, based on density, do we want performance standards based on density? I think we kinda already answered that a little bit earlier.
Did we, which one did I?
Right, um, the.
Four, number four of the.
Fifth bullet down?
Okay.
I think we kinda already answered that, where we're talking about, you know, one building versus another building, and density, wanting different performance standards, do we want it based on that density? But also number of buildings probably, right? So I think that's a, oh, Lu, it's, you know, it's seven oh seven, it's getting lukewarm answers now. Before it was like, right, do it, yeah.
This is good guidance, appreciate the input.
Yeah, sounds, okay, so.
I, I mean, I might suggest, I mean, kinda take a stab at what you think is best here, and then we can have feedback around.
Yeah.
I think that would be easier.
Yeah, that might be easier.
In-village, out-of-village, I would assume, or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's kinda where we are, but.
Well, we're only talking about the growth area for this anyway, right?
Okay, but if the growth area, you know, with the, with the areas that we're pulling out, there, in, I think that, it strikes me that it's appropriate to have different performance standards for multifamily in the village, what I call the village proper versus the periphery.
Okay, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I think that's probably fair.
Okay, okay. Up Lewiston Road, um, up Colley Hill, something.
And then, uh, commercial use for a larger number of dwellings, different standards, so I think that we've already kinda talked about that a little bit, about the commercial restriction, you know, the restrictions we wanna add to commercial. And then total number of units per structure, um, and I know that, I think the planning board said eight to ten or something, but Avesta was twenty-seven, so I think that's gonna be difficult.
I'm not sure I wanna put a cap on that.
But you want Avesta in the village, you said.
Right, exactly, so, yeah, that one's like what you were saying about stories, it's a little wonky to start putting limits.
Right, like, I'm, like, right, cause then you're just gonna turn people away if you have these really strict numbers in here. I, I just, you're not gonna get the buildings if you, if you restrict it to the point where they don't have any interest.
Well, and we have other restrictions, you know, stormwater, public water, sewer, walk, yeah.
Yeah, I think that, yes, I don't think we have to restrict it either, because I think that those other issues that you brought up, C and B, and I think some of the previous topics that we talked about will influence that.
Yeah, height and, yeah, location. Alright, did we hit them all? That's funny, I think, for you to get started, isn't it?
Keep us busy.
Yep, for the next year.
Through the end of the week anyway.
Through the end of the week. Yeah, he'll be looking for something to do. Okay, I think that, uh, does it, so we will end our workshop, and Dan will do notes on the L D two zero zero three. And I will be working on, uh, transitioning into teams this week, so.
Do you still have access after Tuesday?
They're not gonna revoke my, revoke my access until we get through
Okay.
um, that, and also my cleaning out my email, and then, um, since I have a Facebook page, I'll be working with Kyle on that, and that can help inform the council rules on what happens with the Facebook page after council steps down, so.
Oh, right, okay.
Cause that is public information.
Thank you very much, very helpful.
Thank you very much, Doug.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you, that too, that was, that was very helpful that I did that.
Yeah. I think we've all been waiting patiently for some idea of what's gonna happen, so, it's a good starting point. Alright, good night.
Good night.